Colleagues, one minute. Good afternoon. Mr. Sergeant at Arms, will you please call our January 24th, 2023 council meeting to order? I would like to recognize our Chaplain of the Day, Pastor Donald Esther Senior of New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, invited by Councilman Ford. The prayer will be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Esther, please lead us in prayer.
Oh, it's about Father God again. We come with our cats. We again come on this day with Thanksgiving and a heart. We do thank you for your grace and your mercy. We pray your presence be with this, all of the different council, all of the different persons that have come to take care of the business of this city. And we say thank you for the peace that now abide with us and we pray contingency for peace. We ask these and other blessings in our darling son, Jesus' name. Thank God and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Esther, thank you for your prayer. I think that Councilman Ford has a token of recognition for you.
Reverend, on behalf of the City of Memphis, Tennessee, by the City Council, greetings. Be as hereby known that Pastor Don R. Esther Senior in recognition of life, exemplary qualities, outstanding service to the city, meritorious involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrated concern for governmental processes has been appointed Chaplain of the Day of the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all the honors, rights, privileges, prerogatives, and pertaining to the office and to the display of this certificate given under the seal the 24th date of January 2023, Martavius Jones, Chairman presented by Edmond Ford, Senior Member of Council. I'd like to give you this. Thank you so much for coming. And then here's a little token from the council from us. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you so much. And he must know. It's my cousin, y'all.
Did 28 years with Memphis Fire Department.
That's right.
Thank you for your service. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilmember Canali, Carlisle, Colbat, Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson, Logan, Morgan, Robinson, Vice Chairman Smiley.
No place I'd rather be.
Swearengen, Washington, Warren, Chairman Jones. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
I believe Vice Chair Smiley has read the minutes for our January 10th meeting. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from our previous meeting, January 10th. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote? Yes.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, Vice Chairman, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes. Councilmember Canali would also like to be shown his voting yes on the minutes.
Thank you. That item passes. Welcome to the January 24th, 23 regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. Comment cards are available for members of the public wishing to be heard on a specific item. Our Sergeant at Arms has agendas available up front. Please be mindful that all cards must be completed in their entirety, including the item number you wish to speak on. Cards that do not include an item number or are left blank will be held until the end of the meeting for the general comment section. All those wishing to speak on an item must turn in their comment card to the Sergeant at Arms before that item is called. As Chair, I will only recognize citizens that properly registered to speak by submitting a completed comment card to the Sergeant at Arms. So colleagues, before we start hearing our first items, I just wanted us to take a moment of silence. You know, this has been a dark moment in our community over the past couple of weeks since we last met. But in particular, I want to call out the name and recognize the name of Mr. Tyree Nichols, and it could be very well others, and also Dr. Charles Champion, who is no longer with us. So I just want to take a moment of silence for this council and the public to recognize these individuals. And I'm sure there are others, but recognize those that we have lost between our last meeting and today. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, items numbers four, 10, 19, those items have been held for two weeks. And so they will be held, heard at our September, I'm sorry, September, February 7th meeting, yes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number one?
Item number one is a resolution honoring Ramesh Akbari for her election as the Senate Minority Leader of the Tennessee General Assembly. This resolution is sponsored by councilmembers Carlisle, Canali, Jones, and Smiley.
Mr. Carlisle, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, colleagues.
You're recognized.
Colleagues, we are very short, very lucky, rather, to have very capable and competent legislators representing both sides of the aisle in Shelby County. And certainly one such legislator is Senator Ramesh Akbari. So I'll take a moment to read the resolution into the record. Whereas on occasion, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to honor those who have served and advocated for this community. And Senator Ramesh Akbari is one of those, is one such citizen whose contributions to the City of Memphis are certainly worthy of recognition. Whereas Senator Ramesh Akbari is a proud Memphian who serves in the Tennessee State Senate representing District 29, which includes downtown Memphis and parts of Shelby County. She was elected to the State Senate in 2018 after serving three terms in the State House of Representatives. With the State Senate, she serves as the Second Vice Chairwoman of the Senate Education Committee and is a member of the Commerce and Labor Committee and the Ethics Committee. And whereas during her tenure time in public office, Senator Ramesh Akbari has held several leadership positions. In the past, Senator Akbari has served as Chairwoman of the Tennessee Black Caucus of State Legislators and National Treasurer of the National Black Caucus of State Legislators. Presently, she serves as this, as a state director within the Women in Government, National Financial Secretary of the National Organization of Black Elected Legislative Women, and National Financial Secretary of the National Black Caucus of State Legislators. And whereas Senator Ramesh Akbari's legislative work has garnered national and regional acclaim, she is the recipient of numerous honors and awards from the Council of State Governments, Leadership Memphis, Leadership Tennessee, the National Council of State Legislators, the National Black Caucus of State Legislators, and many more. In 2021, Senator Akbari's exceptional work was recognized by our nation's highest office as she was appointed by President Biden as a member to the President's Commission on White House Fellowships. And whereas for all these accomplishments and more, Senator Ramesh Akbari may aptly described as a trailblazer, an outstanding advocate. She has been and will continue to be a champion for policies that improve student outcomes, reform outdated criminal justice rules, and expand middle-class securities and opportunities to more Tennessee families. It is unquestionable that Senator Akbari has used her platform to stand up for the people who live in our district as well as other Tennesseans from all walks of life. Whereas Senator Ramesh Akbari's term in the State Senate has been nothing less than monumentous and inspirational to us all. She was the first African-American woman to serve as the Chair of the Senate Democratic Caucus and the Tennessee Legislature. Most recently, Senator Akbari received the honor of being elected as the first African-American to serve as the Senate Minority Leader for the 113th General Assembly of the Tennessee State Democratic Caucus. Her election to this position will forever be marked in history as a step towards the progress we all hope for. Now therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council honors Senator Ramesh Akbari for her contribution to the City of Memphis and the state of Tennessee and congratulates her on her election to as Senate Minority Leader. Given by our hand under the great seal of the City of Memphis, Chairman Martavius Jones, Vice Chairman J.B. Smiley, Councilmember Ford Canali, and Councilmember Chase Carlisle. Absolutely. Thank you. Pour it on. I will take your applause on her behalf. As you all know, colleagues, Senator Akbari is up with the General Assembly and couldn't be here today, but certainly worthy of the recognition for this body. And I thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Chairman.
And you?
So moved.
Okay, colleagues, there's no object in this. Madam Comptroller, will you show this item has been approved by affirmation? Yes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number two?
Item number two is a resolution to commemorate the 40th anniversary of A&R Barbecue. This resolution is sponsored by councilmembers Swearengen, Washington, Canali, Carlisle, Easter Thomas, Johnson, Jones, Logan, Robinson, Smiley, and Warren.
Thank you. Madam, Councilwoman Swearengen, Washington.
Thank you, Chair. We are honored to be able to commemorate the 40th anniversary of A&R Barbecue. They are a landmark in our community. And the resolution states, whereas when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to honor citizens as well as endeavors that have served this community. And whereas Andrew and Rose Pollard and their legacy of achievement represent one of these worthy circumstances. And whereas Andrew and Rose's family-owned restaurant, A&R Barbecue, with locations at both 1802 Elvis Presley Boulevard and 3721 Hickory Hill Road, Memphis, Tennessee, exemplifies the unrivaled history of culinary talent within our internationally recognized community. And whereas established January 9th, 1983, A&R Barbecue began as a small takeout. Only establishment has since expanded and ingrained itself into the world-renowned Memphis barbecue scene. And whereas with an extensive menu of its unparalleled victuals, including but not limited to their highly requested rib tip plate, A&R Double Meat Burger, Fried Sweet Potato Pies, and Peach Cobbler, it comes at no surprise that A&R Barbecue has been showcased on television as well as various social and print media platforms. And whereas it shall be noted that A&R Barbecue has been showcased on the Food Network, ESPN, the Cooking Channel, the Travel Channel, and has been awarded Best Barbecue during the new Tri-State Defenders Best in Black Awards in 2020. And whereas the restaurants delectable and original recipes have landed it the number one spot on the Southern Living magazines, seventh must-visited barbecue joints in Memphis in 2019, and the number 11 spot on the magazine of the South's Top 50 Barbecue Joints in 2022. And whereas A&R Barbecue's popularity signifies the eater's ability to serve an immeasurable assortment of southern food and charm, which is as a result has garnered global acclaim. In fact, in 2018, the restaurant catered the National Black Caucus Meeting in Washington, D.C., was ordered by Hillary Clinton during her presidential campaign tour in 2016, and visited by Kevin Hart, whereby became an honorary server while on a promotional tour for a movie in 2014, was requested by Patty LaBelle during her tour stop at the Orpheum Theater in 2011. Whereas numerous accolades aside, one needs to only understand that the success of A&R Barbecue is no part accidental. The restaurant has been exclusively owned by the Pullitt family since its inception. Together, Andrew and Rose Pollard have continued to pass down original recipes to their progeny and traditions and continue to guide their descendants in the present day. Whereas as a result of Andrew and Rose Pollard's hard work and dedication, A&R Barbecue is now synonymous with excellence as well as honor within the Memphis community. Whereas the Memphis City Council finds value in honoring Memphians whose efforts reflect our community's best qualities. We now seek to commemorate A&R Barbecue and its present and historical attributes which have led to being an invaluable institution within the city of Memphis. Now therefore resolved that A&R Barbecue and the enduring legacy of Andrew and Rose Pollard be collectively recognized for their contributions to the City of Memphis, we entreat citizens everywhere to mirror their same spirit of vigor and dedication within their lives. Given by my hand and under the great seal of the City of Memphis this 24th day of January 2023, Councilwoman Janice Swearengen, Washington, Memphis City Council, District 4, it has been co-sponsored, co-sponsored by all of the Memphis City Council members.
Congratulations.
I want to add that they were a supporting family when I was teaching at Peabody Elementary School, and I taught both of their grandchildren.
And you, and you so moved.
Wow, we really appreciate the honor you have given us to come down and thank you for recognizing us and we appreciate you. And you all ever need anything, get a little hungry, just give us a call. We'll be there to take care of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that item has been moved and seconded. Madam Comptroller, will you, yes. Will you please show that this item has been approved by affirmation, please? Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number three?
Item number three is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Chelseaa Avenue from Harrison Street to North Hollywood Street for Dr. Gloria Pryor Lewis, District 7, Super District 8, sponsored by councilmembers Easter Thomas and Smiley. And there is a request for same night minutes.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Vice Chair Smiley?
That's Easter Thomas and Logan.
And Easter Thomas, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Easter Thomas.
Well, I was just looking at your name. Thank you, Chair. I moved it, but this is, if you remember, on last council meeting, we definitely honored Dr. Pryor Lewis for her contributions to the city. And also, this was left off of last meeting's agenda, so we just want to procedurally make sure that it gets done to recognize her.
Did you want to add a thing, Vice Chair Smiley?
Councilwoman Easter Thomas did an amazing job explaining where we are. Good job, Councilwoman.
And who's going to move it?
I'm moving.
Gotcha. Okay. So that item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilwoman Logan. So you missed out, Mr. Vice Chair. Seeing no members to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please show that this item has been approved by affirmation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So noted.
Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 30?
Item number 30 on my draft for the add-on agendas reads a joint resolution recognizing the services and contributions of Gino Brownlee. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas, you're recognized.
Hi, Mr. Brownlee. It may be introducing him to some of you all. I came across him just being aware of what's going on in the communities and folks just doing things on their own. But I would definitely like to read into the record this resolution to honor Mr. Brownlee today. Whereas when noteworthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council honors citizens within our communities and within our great city, and Gino Brownlee is one such citizen. Having grown up in the South Memphis and Frazier community, Gino had a goal to beat the odds and graduate from Frazier High School. Though not from Frazier High, Mr. Brownlee did indeed beat the odds when he graduated from Frazier Preparatory School in 2010, where he received his high school diploma. In building a foundation for his life, Gino experienced people and building a foundation for his life, Gino experienced people quitting on him, giving up on him, telling him no, but with the help of his grandmother Evelyn Smith, he persevered and finished his secondary school education, and inspiring and serving his community by improving child literacy. Gino Brownlee has worked for the last two years as a motivational speaker, hosting Stop the Bullying workshops, which are sessions designed to teach children and young adults about the types of bullies. He also writes children's books and makes it his mission to inspire the youth one day at a time. Having spoken at 145 schools, did y'all hear that number? 145 schools and two prisons, Gino Brownlee is a five-time published author of children's books, including the books One Day the Sun Will Shine and A Superior Christmas with 901 NASCAR and Friends. He has also been featured in WAMI Magazine, which showcases and highlights children from around the US. Outside of his children's books and speaking engagements, Gino Brownlee also reaches youth through social media. He went viral for creating a dance and gained over 4 million views. He used this engagement tool to promote the song Saucy, which focuses on encouraging children and young adults to dress for success, stay in school, achieve good grades, and to prevent bullying in schools. That's what Saucy means, y'all. Y'all didn't know? Being unequivocal and purposeful about helping youth, Gino's work has connected him with members of the entertainment and sports industries, including but not limited to Moneybag Yo, Glow Rilla, Bankroll Freddie, Dee Moolah, Penny Hardaway, and Zach Randolph. Being a father, independent artist, children's book author, motivational speaker, and the visionary of Changing Lives Global Foundation, Gino Brownlee has accomplished a great deal. His passion and commitment for our city's youth has changed the lives of children and young adults in Memphis, and now therefore being resolved, we honor and recognize Gino Brownlee for his service and his contributions to our youth within the communities we serve. Though ink and parchment are most inadequate to highlight such contributions, we commend Gino Brownlee for his commitment and service to our youth in the city of Memphis with the utmost and most sincere respect. Please join me in congratulating and commending Mr. Gino Brownlee, colleagues.
I want to appreciate everyone for recognizing my great work that I do in the schools of Memphis across the globe and also in my community. Coming from where I come from, it's just amazing for me to receive an award like this. Last time I received an award was 13 years ago. I'm speechless, I'm just forever grateful and thankful for the award.
Continue the work you do.
So what, I'm sorry?
No, say, continue the work that you do.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
And I so move.
Thank you. That item has been moved electronically by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, if you would like that, and seconded by Vice Chair Smiley, and Madam Comptroller, will you please show that this item has been approved by affirmation? Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number five?
Item number five is... A resolution pursuant to Chapter 9.6 of the Memphis and Shelby County Unifying Development Code, approving a special use permit at the subject property located at 526 Weekly Avenue. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is SUP 22-31.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson?
This item was heard in committee, and it received a favorable motion, and I so move.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number six? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number six is a resolution pursuant to Chapter 9.6 of the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, approving a planned development at the subject property located at 8349 Macon Road. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 22-24.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. This item was brought before committee, and it received a favorable vote, and I so move. Recommendation.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item, that item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call our consent agenda?
One moment, please.
Take your time.
Thank you. I think I've got some add-ons to include with this.
This caller?
If it can be done without objection, if we could add item number 22 as well to the consent agenda, it was a unanimous vote.
Okay, if you could...
It's to the chairman's discretion.
If you could just read into the record what it is, what the item is?
Okay, I'm going to try through this. Starting on our regular agenda, we have item number seven, Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Memphis, Chapter 2-16, City Real Property Management, to require any contracts for the modification of city-owned property leased to any non-profits unaffiliated with the city of Memphis with a cost in excess of $1 million be presented to the Memphis City Council for review and approval. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5845 is sponsored by Chairman Jones, Ford, Johnson, Logan, Swerengen Washington, and Warren. Item number eight is an ordinance renaming South Second Street between Bill Street and GE Patterson Avenue as Representative Barbara Cooper Street. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5846 is sponsored by the Memphis City Council. Item number nine is an ordinance up for second reading. The ordinance number is 5843. Item number 10 was held. Item number 11 is from engineering, a resolution approving the final plat of 220 South Claybrook Apartments and accepting bond as security. There is a request for same-night minutes. The contract for this item is CR 5434. Item number 12 is a resolution approving engineering plans for Storage World on airways, and we're accepting the bond as security. There is a request for same-night minutes. That contract number is 5435. And I am looking for other consent items, and I don't think I have any more.
Twenty...
Twenty-two?
Twenty...
Consent.
Madam, Mr. Chair. Madam Comptroller, your items on the add-ons that are consent are items 22, 27, 28, and 29.
Thank you. Item number 22 is a resolution in support of efforts to reduce ethylene oxide emissions in the city of Memphis, District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by council members Ford, Warren, Canali, Carlisle, Colvet, Easter Thomas, Johnson, Jones, Logan, Robinson, Smiley, and Swerengen Washington. My next item is 27, a joint resolution of the Memphis City Council and Shelby County Board of Commissioners, requesting State of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee General Assembly amend the short rail line preservation program eligibility requirements to provide more accessibility for small and medium business grantees. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Chairman Jones. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 28 is a joint resolution of the Memphis City Council and Shelby County Board of Commissioners, requesting State of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee General Assembly ensure that Memphis and Shelby County, Tennessee, receives its proportional share of funding from the United States Environmental Protection Agency Solid Waste Infrastructure for Recycling Grant Program. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Chairman Jones, and there is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 29 is a resolution of the Memphis City Council requesting the State of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee and Tennessee General Assembly expand the airplane mechanic program at the Tennessee College of Applied Technology located in Memphis, Tennessee, by increasing funding and number of students eligible to provide more accessibility for applicants. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Chairman Jones. Item number...31? 29? That concludes it? Thank you, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Appreciate you, Chairman. On number eight, for the consent, each council member should have received a letter for the notice for public hearing on the street name change. I just want to make sure everyone had the first read. Thank you.
Okay, our consent agenda has been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen Washington. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 21?
Item number 21 on our add-ons is our fiscal consent agenda item. It's a resolution to amend the council FY 23 grant allocations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Colvet, and I believe that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
Yes, ma'am, it does. We have, this item moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen Washington. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call MLGNW Fiscal Consent Agenda?
On our MLGW Fiscal Consent Agenda, we have... Thank you. Item number 13, a resolution awarding a 36-month purchase order to Neptune Technology Group, Inc., for water meters in the amount of $3,184,544.10. Item number 14 is a resolution approving change number four to contract number 12013, MLGW Water Engineering and Operations Generator Maintenance and Repair with Cummings Incorporated to ratify and renew the current contract in the amount of $50,000. Item number 15 is a resolution approving change number one to contract number 12379 at Germantown Gate Station with TD Williamsom, TDWUS Incorporated, to amend the original award amount to reflect an increase of $73,382.71. And item number 16 is a resolution approving contract number 12410, University of Memphis on behalf of the HIRF College of Engineering Center for Applied Earth Science and Engineering Research, for the authorization to pay for services, maintenance, and support of the current contract in the funded amount of $1,625. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items.
Thank you, Councilman Carlisle. I'm sorry, Councilman Canali.
Let's get this New Year's resolution locked.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we pull in number 13 from the fiscal consent and hear that separately, please?
Okay, there's no objection. Item 13 will be voted on separately. So, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the fiscal consent agenda for items 14 through 16?
Absolutely. It's moved by Robinson and seconded by Swerengen.
Yes.
Thank you. Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Show Vice Chair Smiley is voting, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Ms. Canali, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jeans, could you give us further explanation on the 15% contingency in item number 13, please, sir?
Mr. Jeans, MLGW CFO. This is a purchase order for water meters over a period of, I believe it's a five-year period, so the contingency is just in the event there are price increases over that period of time. All these meters won't be bought all at once, they'll be bought over a period of time.
Why 15%?
We've just seen general inflationary pressures. It may not be as much as that, that's not a guarantee that we'll pay 15%, but it's just built in there in the event either the price goes up or else we need a different quantity than is specified in this resolution.
You'll report back to us on what the actual increase is?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Morgan?
You'll report back to us on what the actual increase is?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Morgan.
Mr. Chair, has Neptune provided our other smart water meters?
They are a supplier. We have bought Neptune water meters before as well as other manufacturers.
Okay. We've been satisfied with the, I guess, the- they've met their promises or met expectations in terms of deliverables for the meters that are already in operation that they provided?
Yes.
Okay. And how- what's the total number of meters that this is expected to buy over thirty-six months?
The, uh, the total quantity by various types of meters was estimated as well as the unit price, and just multiplying price times quantity for each of the different types of meters and adding that up is how we arrived at the...
Oh, yeah. No, no, not how we arrived, but what- so, I don't know what the unit price is, so we see three point one eight four million. How many meters does that buy? I'm just trying to figure out the scope of the market.
It's about seventeen thousand meters.
Okay.
Which averages about a hundred and eighty dollars per meter.
Okay. Are these-
Some are small, typical residential meters that cost in the range of a little over a hundred dollars, and then some of them are very large industrial meters that may be several thousand.
Okay. And are these going to be for, I guess, new installations or replacement meters or a combination of both?
There's some of both.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Councilwoman Johnson?
Chair, how many more of these meters will we have to purchase in the future?
Well, there'll be an ongoing need to replace meters as they fail in the field, but this should last us for a good period of time. So, I don't expect we'll be bringing back a resolution for this kind of quantity any time in the near future.
So, all the water meters are digital at this time?
They're what? I'm sorry.
All your water meters are digital? I'm assuming this is a digital-type meter.
Not all are at this point, yet.
Okay. So, you're not going to replace them? When will you replace them?
We will- we will replace meters as they fail. There are still some that are not smart meters, so to those customers that have not opted out, but we have not yet got to them, then that could be a potential use for these meters as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilman Carlisle, followed by Councilwoman Logan.
Thought it was going to be a quick day, didn't it? So, on the- by the way, anybody that's wondering, they don't have the unit pricing, but the different types of meters are on the- on the resolution across the board. I understand the large quantity economy scale you're getting ordering. What I don't understand is, over the thirty-six-month, you're appropriating three point two million basically today. This is- this is purchase and install together?
No.
No, just purchase? Right. So, I guess my- my point to you is, is I don't understand where the inflationary pressure is coming from. Are they going to order today? The only inflationary pressure you have is the installation schedule, right? Unless you spread out the order period over the time because you don't have the storage to take delivery of the meters and store them. I'm trying to understand that, I guess.
Well, again, it's not simply potential inflationary pressures, but indeed, storage of meters is a- is an issue where we would store everything, but also if the quantity varies, as we see as time goes by over this period of time, if we need to get more, that contingency was just built in in the event, so we don't have to come back to the board and the council and...
Yeah. And I don't want to be dismissive and say that three point two million is a drop in the bucket in the grand scheme of things. It is, though, in reality, like they're- not that we don't need to be responsible for every dollar, but I do, again, I'm- I don't fully- I don't want to say I'm indifferent. I don't fully have an opinion. I don't understand, again, like, if you tell me that, I'd have to see the contract to understand why there's the contingency. I understand why contingencies exist. If it's a three-year run-up and you're going to buy over time, then yes, you can't control the cost of- the cost of goods. If you're locked into the pricing of what's in this resolution, then the only thing is, is if there's a change in scope, which would be a contingency. So, that's where I- like, again, I don't understand. I've yet to hear a very clear answer of why the contingency is set. I don't have a huge problem with it necessarily, but I don't like that I don't understand why there's a fifteen percent built-in contingency. It can't be parts unless there's a change in the quantities. It shouldn't be inflationary pressures because you should be locking in what you're buying today, and this doesn't cover install, so there's no labor pressure over three years.
So, again, there's basically two reasons. One is if the quantity varies over time, if we see that needs to vary, and if it needs to increase, then the fifteen percent contingency is available for that. And then, secondly, as time goes by and we buy these meters over the three-year period, if there are material costs increases in the- in the meters themselves, then that would be covered by the contingency as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. My question is similar. I'm just wondering if you all are doing this because you've had a problem- a problem with this order before or the company? Are you having trouble getting them and keeping them? Is that why we want to purchase seventeen thousand and store them? You know, is there a reason that you've experienced it before is the reason why you're doing it?
So, there is the ongoing need for meters, just for replacements. I mentioned previously that there are also meters out there that have not been upgraded to be smart meters for individuals that have not opted out of the smart meter, so we still have some of those meters to go as well. So, that's, to put it in perspective, we have about two hundred and fifty thousand water meters in total, so this is about seventeen thousand meters over a three-year period. So, it's relatively small compared to the total meter population.
So, you have seventeen thousand that you need to replace now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what we anticipate using over this three-year period.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. You're back.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson.
I have a question. Why do we need thirty-six months to purchase it? I'm lost.
I'm sorry?
Why do we need thirty-six months to purchase this?
Well, we don't need all the meters all at once.
Okay.
So, there's- it's basically type a blanket purchase order that would allow us to purchase meters over the three-year period.
Okay.
Rather than take delivery all at once.
But at the same time, you can't get the company to lock in those prices if you want. You let them know, we're planning on buying seventeen thousand.
Well, again, in the environment we're in now with material costs, we see this kind of pressure in various things. We see it in cable and other things that we're going to take delivery over a period of time. There is often some inflationary pressure driven by material costs.
Okay. I'm just still a little confused, trying to figure out how you could save that potential fifteen percent, or if the company you're working with, if you could negotiate a set price for a period of time rather than it being kind of for three years.
And again, the fifteen percent is not all related to inflation. It is partially related to inflation, but the fifteen percent is designed to give us some leeway in case the quantities need to change as well.
I'm a little confused. It looks like you would come back with your budget every year, come back and adjust it rather than necessarily going out three years in advance and thus obligating it for three years. Things change in three years. Administration changes in three years. I just, you know, a little concerned. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Is there- you good? Any other colleagues want to speak on this item? Okay. Well, sing no- Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare this item for the vote? Wait, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion on this item? You didn't- you didn't move it, Ms. Canali, did you?
Moved it.
Okay. Okay. Been moved by Canali, seconded by Carlisle. Sing no members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvett, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, abstain. Logan, abstain. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item twenty-three?
Item number twenty-three is a resolution to allocate and appropriate five hundred nine thousand five hundred dollars from the CIP budget for the development and improvement of the Glenview Community Center, District Four, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by council members Swerengen-Washington, Canali, Carlisle, Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson, Jones, Logan, Smiley, and Warren, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, recommended approval and I say move.
Okay. That item has been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Sing no members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item twenty-five? I'm s- yes, twenty- twenty-four, I'm sorry. Item number twenty-four.
I thought it was me. Item number twenty-four. Item number twenty-four is on my agenda. We are really moving around here. Is a resolution to allocate and appropriate two hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars from the CIP budget for the development and im- improvement of the Glenview Community... Hold on. Number twenty-four is a resolution to allocate and appropriate two hundred forty five hundred dollars from the CIP budget for the development and improvement of beach park, pool, and ancillary uses, District Seven, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by Easter Thomas, Canali, Carlisle, Colvett, Ford, Johnson, Jones, Logan, Robinson, Smiley, Swerengen-Washington, and Warren.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Warren.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. That was for two hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars. Committee recommended approval and I say move.
Okay. That item has been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen-Washington. Sing no speakers, no colleagues to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item twenty-five?
Item number twenty-five is an appointment to the Memphis and Shelby County Film and Television Commission. We have Gina Neely. And to the Memphis and Shelby County Economic Development Growth Engine, we have an appointment of J. Ten Kumar. That concludes the appointments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That item has been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen-Washington. Colleagues, we have one card on this item, Ms. P. Moses. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
P. Moses, twenty-three eighty-three Jackson Avenue.
And you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
First of all, I hope you'll give me more than two minutes because I came up here on Martin Luther King's birthday, and I was denied access to this public building by Lieutenant Barbie who works for the Memphis Police. So, I'm here because I don't want you to appoint anybody. I don't have any objections to the Film Commission, strictly to the Economic Development and Growth Engine divi- division. I don't want anybody appointed to this board because as far as I'm concerned, the board is not utilizing the resources and the tax breaks to benefit our community. As you know, there was a murder that took place here on January the seventh, I believe, Mr. Tyree Nichols. He was bor- he was murdered at the hands of the Memphis Police. I am very upset with everybody on this city council because you are our representatives, you are our checks and balances, and not one of you have come out publicly and demanded that that tape that we paid three million dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wade, when we paid for the body cams, we, the taxpayers, paid for it. So, regardless if an attorney comes from out of town and says that the family wants us to wait a week, the community is not going to wait a week. We paid for it. If we can't get it within a reasonable amount of time, which is now, we want a refund, and we want the Economic Development and Growth Engine to do what they need to do in North Memphis specifically. J. B. Smiley, you know me. Michael Lynn, you know me. Worth Morgan, you know me, and we want the tape. We want the footage now. Jim Strickland, Mayor Strickland, did a good job by firing those officers, but this is about transparency, and damn it, we gonna have it or we need a refund on our tax dollars that we paid. Ms. Robinson, you know me. Y'all should be asking for it. The public wants to see what happened. We want to know, are we really employing people that think it's okay to beat the shit out of folks? It could have been your son, Ms. Logan. It could have been you, Edlin Ford.
Ms. Moses. Ms. Moses, you would not- you would not use profanity before this council. Ms. Moses? Sing no other speakers to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Mr. Smiley went to the back. Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvett, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item-
And Mr. Smiley would like to show being voted yes on this item.
That item passes.
Yes, probably. On the left.
Madam Comptroller, please call item twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six is a resolution accepting the donation of real property located at twenty-one forty South Third Street. It's nine acres, a little over, point two, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero nine, District Six, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by General Services, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee may recommend approval and I say move.
That item has been moved by Councilman Smiley. Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren. Sing no members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvett, yes. Yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item seventeen?
Item seventeen is a resolution approving the sale of city-owned property known as Zero Castalia Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one four, parcel ID number zero three one zero nine four zero zero three one, containing zero point two zero acres, District Four, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by General Services.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smiley?
Mr. Chair, the committee may recommend approval and I say move.
That item has been moved by Council, Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canalee, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 18?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 18 is a resolution requesting the City of Memphis to transfer its ownership rights and interest in a parcel located at 268 Bethel Avenue. The parcel ID is 0220290011 in the Uptown Tiff Zone to the Community Redevelopment Agency, District 7, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by General Services.
Vice Chair Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee may recommend approval and I say move.
Okay, that item has been moved by...
People other than me.
Yes.
Has been moved by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen for the vote?
Canalee, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item... 19?
Item number 19 is a resolution to transfer funds...
Wait, no, no, no. We held that. I'm sorry. Yep, we held that. Yep. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 20?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's under our Division of Public Works. We have a resolution appropriating funds in the amount of $9,131,466 for construction of the TE Maxon Wastewater Treatment Facility Belt Filter Press Replacement and Sludge Disposal Earth Complex. Our project number is SW02006, District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Public Works.
Vice Chair Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee may recommend approval and I say move.
Okay, that item has been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canalee, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number 31?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 31 is a joint resolution of the Memphis City Council and Shelby County Board of Commissioners requesting State of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee General Assembly amend Tennessee Code annotated Section 67-5-501 to treat an investor's rental of 50 or more single-family residential properties in one county, the same as an investor's rental of industrial and commercial properties for taxation purposes. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Chairman Jones, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Okay, colleagues, we discussed this item, excuse me, we discussed this item in executive, and I see that it has been moved by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington, seconded by Councilman Warren. We have Councilman Carlisle in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had two abstentions. I'm gonna do my best to wrap them in for a unanimous decision. We spent a lot of time at the body over the last three, three years talking about ways in which we can deal with the problematic issue of institutional private equity coming into markets in large ways with faceless, nameless organizations. We're attempting to get state law amended for rental registry, and ultimately what you have is you've got commercial businesses operating in individual residential capacities. And the way that our state tax laws are structured with franchise and excise tax, because they get such accelerated depreciation on the home they buy, the equipment in it, anything they utilize, like they can drop their adjusted gross income, what they actually pay the state in franchise tax down to nearly nothing. So they're getting the benefit of the income and the rental income, and we're not getting our fair share of basically what is a commercial enterprise one way or the other. So a registry is one way. This could be and both. It could be either or. But the first things first is we've got to get the ball rolling and at least say this isn't an idea from the body. I have no doubt that we will hear concerns from a lot of those larger owners or potentially hear concerns. But at the end of the day, at least they're going to show up and we'll have someone to debate with on how they can be beneficial to the community. So again, I thank my colleague, Chairman Jones, for being the sponsor here on the city side. I appreciate the county originating the resolution. And at the end of the day, we have to start somewhere, and this is a good place to start from. I hope everybody will support this because it's a growing problem for us. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. And I echo those sentiments as well. And as we talked about, it could be, you know, this is just our resolution. This is not the law itself. I would hope that in order to address the fact that an entity could separate into holdings that are less than this 50, that any type of final language has some type of cross-ownership or common ownership as a way to address those particular issues. But if you have this number, you know, this is something that we talked about. I appreciate the county commission for taking the initiative on this as well. But I think that this number, I think in the past when we've had these discussions, there was some discussion about or some concern about at what threshold would we affect some of the small, local investors along these lines. But clearly, if we're, this number of 50, you're almost of an institutional type of, type of concern in doing something like this. So I fully support this, and I hope my colleagues do as well. Are there any other members who speak on this item? Seeing no, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Thank you. Canalee, yes. Carlisle, yes. Show Mr. Colvette is voting yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 20?
Let's see if we can do it like this.
Oh, we did 20? Okay. Gotcha. Okay. That brings us to our same night minutes. Vice Chair Smiley, would you please read the same night minutes into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The same night minute items are 3, 11, 12, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31. Shout out to Liza. And I say move.
Okay. Our same night minutes have been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare for the vote?
Thank you. Canalee, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. That brings us to our section for public comment. We have multiple cards this evening, and we're going to take them in this order. We have quite a few cards. We've tried to combine some of them. First, we'll recognize Mr. Vincent Taylor.
Thank you. I'm here with my relatives. He went to the restroom, but he'd be right back out.
Mr. Taylor, your name and address for the record, please.
Vincent Taylor, 4721 Harvest Park Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38125.
Okay, you have two minutes, sir.
Well, I don't know if I'm here in time. Last week, I was calling about the police impound. We have about three to five acres right down the street from your city impound right now. I understand your lots are full, and we're not, we're right past the police academy on Danny Thomas, right down the street there on Third. And we're looking to see if we can lease some of that land to you for the overload of those cars. And I understand you got a lot of cars there that is sitting around. You got a lot of red tape. They're not moving, they're not moving, and things. So it wouldn't be like a lot where people come and get their cars. You would free up space to move those cars to the lot that we have. But it's, it's right, like I said, it's right past the police academy, right down the street from your impound. And I wasn't here last week, and I don't know, I knew you got a problem there. And the police department has told me you got a problem with those cars. And we're looking to lease. We got about three acres now. Next door, we're picking up two more acres. So you have about five acres there on Danny Thomas on Third Street. And also, you got a problem with your impound. So we have a truck incoming for our impound also. But we're looking at to move some of those cars you're having a problem with right now with the city. And I would just like to find out if that's something you all consider or that's something that's over with and you already have room for your cars.
Mr. Taylor, that's the actual execution and purchase of a property for the impound lot rests with the administration, not with the council. So the administration would have to initiate it.
What I'm saying is, it's in the county. See, I don't know...
Either way, if the, if the, if the City of Memphis decides to buy anything, any type of real property, for whatever reason...
So it would be a problem for you all to lease that land even though it's in the county? It's not in the city?
The city can buy anything that it wants to, but the city would have, the administration would have to make that initiative, not this body. Dr. Warren?
Could we, could we possibly make sure that... Mr. Chair, could we possibly have staff get his name and information, and let's take that to the mayor? So, or we can get it from, have administration get his name and information, and they will be the ones that could approach you and rent that? It sounds like a really good idea to us because we know there's a problem there.
But colleagues, keep in mind, the, the police department is going to come back with recommendations about addressing the impound lot. So this is just, this is still the section for general public comments. But either, either way, Mr. Taylor, it's not something that the council will initiate. It would have to be the mayor and the administration.
So what I'm asking, is it okay? I leave my information, and you can pass it on? Is that okay or not?
We have, yeah, we have it here.
You can do that?
Yes.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah. We have it.
Well, that's all I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Thanks. Next, I'm sorry. Next speaker is Angela Johnson, who's going to be speaking on the ethylene oxide issue. Ms. Johnson? And you have two minutes to speak. Please provide your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Angela Johnson. My address is 4092 Charter Avenue in Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. I just saw in the Daily Memphian that you all are supporting a resolution to address the ethylene oxide issue that is taking place in Memphis. And I just want to express my thanks for taking action against this problem that has been plaguing the community since 1976. But there will be a community meeting again February, Saturday, February the 11th at 10:30 a.m. at the South Branch Library, 1929 South Third Street. And I did see that in the Daily Memphian, it said it was a non-binding resolution. So if there's any information that you guys can share in regards to explaining what that may mean and what your resolution may consist of, and I'm sure that this information would be very important for residents who are directly impacted by the sterilization services of Tennessee, it would be helpful to relay that information to them. And of course, we do welcome you all to come out to that meeting that Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Here's a copy for your records of the resolution that we passed earlier today. You're welcome. Right. Because we're dealing with the Environmental Protection Agency, we can't direct them to do anything. So we can just ask as a body, based upon the language in that. So it's directed to the EPA, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. So, but it's just the body speaking. The only way that we speak officially is through a resolution that was passed today.
And this can be made available for residents to see this information and support you guys and...
Yes. And we, and we have approved it with same night minutes. So that particular document is official. That's our, going on the record on how we feel about this, about that item.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming down. Next, we have Mr. Richard Massey. Mr. Richard Massey?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Richard Massey. I am 18 years old, attend the University of Memphis. My address is 614 Coaster Drive in Marion, Arkansas. And I was hoping that you guys would uphold my time, past two minutes today, because what we're addressing is an injustice that has permeated throughout our city. We have a community that is reeling, and we desperately need to address measures that need to be taken that are statistically proven that have worked across the country. Today, we should not be, we should not be assembled together referencing Tyree's outlet's fatherhood and beautiful soul posthumously. Unquestionably, a simple traffic stop or any commonplace procedure executed by the Memphis Police Department should never culminate into a fatal interaction, particularly in the case of Tyree, who was unarmed and defenseless and still subjected to a heinous beating that rendered him unrecognizable to his family members. Tyree's senseless and tragic death at the hands of those five officers has conjured comparisons to the likes of Rodney King's vicious beating and the recorded murder of George Floyd. Attorney Anthony Romanucci compared the body camera footage of Tyree's arrest to that of witnessing a human piñata. A traffic violation has woefully served as the precursor of the grisly murder of black and brown people in this nation time and time again. Unfortunately, this time around, that reality has come knocking at our door. We wholeheartedly commend the efforts of Chief Davis to effectively terminate the officers involved in Tyree's and Warren's murder, as well as District Attorney Mulroy's commitment to the public release of the body cam footage in question. The Department of Justice has also initiated an investigation with the full-fledged cooperation of the Memphis Police Department. However, in light of a deplorable, detestable act of senseless violence imposed upon an unarmed, nonviolent young man, there is more to be done. Memphis has an opportunity to establish a new precedent in revitalizing the eroded relationship between our community and our police department. We cannot afford to elect inaction as a policy choice after a man was robbed of his life in the most dehumanizing manner ever. We cannot afford to be ignorant to the reality of the disease of police misconduct being swept under the rug.
Mr. Massey?
Yes, sir.
I need you to wrap up your comments. Ms., Ms., Ms. Moses? Ms. Moses, outbursts like that, I'm going to have Mr. Young to remove you, okay? I'm respecting your right to be here and respecting your right to comment, but I'm not going to sit here and allow you to have these outbursts in this civil meeting, okay? Ms. Massey, I need you to wrap up your comments. I granted you more than your two minutes, and we have other, other members of the public that would like to speak.
Yes, sir. I'm going to move forward briefly as far as the measures that I'm referencing.
Do you have anything in writing that you, that you can submit to the council, please?
Yes, sir. I could submit this address to you guys.
If you, if you would, please. We'll, we'll recognize it that way.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And thank you for coming down, indeed. The next member of the public that would like to speak is Ms. Ayana Watkins. Uh, the next member of the public that would like to speak is Ms. Ayanna Watkins.
Hello, my name is Ayanna Watkins. I am here with Micah, Memphis Interfaith Coalition for Action and Hope. And the young man who was speaking before me was saying exactly what I was gonna say, so I'm gonna give my two minutes back to him.
Well, no, you're not able to yield your time to someone else. You had to speak on your own behalf.
Okay. Well, what he said, this community is hurting. We're trying to figure out our way forward. We've got clergy, we've got activists, we've got nonprofit directors, we've got students, parents, teachers, all trying to make their way through this. And we know even once we get through this single incident, we'll come back to the same culture, the same training conversations, all the same conversations we've been having for before. So we just want to reiterate what we've been hearing already. No one should die from a traffic stop. No one should die from a traffic stop. We as civilians should not be ignorant to what police training and policies are so that we have to keep asking, is this actually even in policy? Is this even legal? Those things should be transparent and open. What we heard before, we pay for these cameras. We want to see what is going on. Do I want to see the video? I don't know. I'm a mama too. So many of us are. We're brothers and sisters and children, sons and daughters. But what we do want to see is justice for Tyree and everyone else like him walking these streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, uh, comment card is from, is it Casio Montez? I apologize if I can't uh, read the handwriting here. Welcome, sir. Your name and address for the record. Two minutes, please.
Casio Montez, uh, 503 North Fifth Street. Uh, first of all, it's a lot of new faces since the last time I've been here. But one thing about the ones that do know me, know for a fact that I'm not finna stop. I had some I suppose I'd been reading off, but I believe it's, I feel it, it's time for me to speak from my heart. Y'all do know ain't nothing protecting the city of Memphis from being destroyed. Not no police officer, nothing but God at this point. People are pissed off, totally pissed off. And y'all sit back like it's nothing going on, like it's, it's, it's just normal. Let me, let me wake everybody up right quick. Hey, man, this is a young man that can, the police or anyone else can't bring no dirt up to fine about him. Everybody on this bench know that was murder. How can y'all sit back and make funds to give another budget to some people? And I'm not saying police officers are public service because that's not what they are, to people who are only destroying lives of citizens. This could have been any one of y'all's child. This could have been any one of you. Come on, stop throwing rocks and hide in your hand. It's, it's time to be human. No matter what your title is, that don't matter. Because at the end of the day, we all be judged by one person. Cut the bull crap, man. We come respectfully this time. Just to hear y'all, just to let y'all hear our demands, we not asking. Because we put y'all in them spots. If y'all, if it ain't dawned in y'all head. And every time I come, I be respectful. I know Mr. Ford know me personally from other times I have came. And one thing I know he know, I ain't gonna give up. Whether it's in here or out there, it's a problem. And it's left up to y'all to fix it. It starts with y'all too, just like it started with CJ Davis, like it started with Strickland. I don't know if y'all saw the, the MLK breakfast. Yeah, that was us. And we coming back again. I'm not here to make a threat. I make promises and I stand on beat. So I don't need two minutes to say what I said. Y'all heard it.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. Next, we have, uh, Ms. Amber Sherman.
Um, Amber Sherman, 6070 North Belgro Cove, Memphis, Tennessee.
Thank you.
I'm here today to urge the city council members to pass the data transparency ordinance and support the family of Tyree Nichols and asking the officers and every first responder involved be charged accordingly. The violent murder of Tyree Nichols is not a one-off occurrence and frankly, we're tired of being ignored. Just last month, Decarcerate Memphis presented on how dangerous pretextual traffic stops were and how they targeted black folks the most. The exact way that Tyree Nichols was murdered. In a sample of 487 criminal court cases stemming from traffic stops in 2019 and 2021, 90% of defendants were people of color, 93% of whom faced only misdemeanor charges. Two-thirds of cases were dropped, but only after days were wasted in court. And the traffic patrols were concentrated in low-income areas. And as the median income of a zip code decreased, the drivers appeared more frequently in court. That sounds like disenfranchisement to me. That sounds like racism to me. Decarcerate Memphis analyzed traffic citations issued between 2017 and 2020 to 2021, and there were clear patterns of discrimination. Black men were cited 3.4 times as often as white men. Black women were cited 4.7 times as often as white women. And the city continues to not take us seriously. The police chief has made excuses and the mayor, of course, did nothing per usual. Now a man has been murdered and CJ Davis wants to cry with his mom instead of taking responsibility and admitting this entire ordeal was preventable. Stop acting after the fact. Provide us the data transparency that we're asking you for by passing this ordinance and continue, and stop continuing to ignore us because you can prevent this violence by police and we've already told you how. End pretextual, pretextual traffic stops. Stop using undercover officers and unmarked vehicles when doing them and listen to citizens. Like Casio said, we're not gonna stop. I will come to every meeting. I will come to your house. I will go to the mayor's house. I will come to every event you show up at until we get justice for Tyree Nichols.
Our next comment card is from Mr. George Boynton.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm George Boynton. I'm here today representing the Tennessee Young Democrats in our Shelby County chapter. Young Democrats throughout Tennessee are saddened, horrified, and outraged at the death of Memphis police citizen, of Memphis citizen Tyree Nichols at the hands of police violence perpetrated by the Memphis Police Department. We are further alarmed that employees of other public agencies attempted to conspire to cover up the surrounding circumstances of Tyree's death, including by members of the Memphis Fire Department and the administration of Memphis Mayor Jim Strickland. Young Democrats in Shelby County have stood and continue to stand with the family of Tyree during their time of mourning and in seeking justice. No person should lose their life at the hands of a governmental entity purporting to perform public service. We, the Young Democrats, call upon law enforcement to expeditiously and thoroughly investigate and refer for prosecution everyone involved in the murder and attempted cover up of Tyree Nichols' death and for transparency with regard to their findings and their work. Most painfully, Tyree's tragic death is a symptom of a problem with Republican Memphis Mayor Jim Strickland's crime and policing philosophy. Tyree's death did not have to occur. Memphis City Legal Division recommended to Mayor Jim Strickland and then Memphis Police Director Mike Rollins in 2017, 2019, and 2020 against certain diminished and/or expedited training standards implemented in the name of producing more police recruits. All officers named in the murder of Tyree Nichols were hired after Jim Strickland's diminished standards were implemented. Further, members of the city's legal department warned Mayor Strickland not to advocate for the removal of police residency requirements relating to the risk of diminished rapid mobilization capabilities for officers living farther away than was the prior standard of local residency. And a study exists citing higher claims against officers who live outside of Memphis rather than inside of it. Also, a trend analysis exists, all of this is within the files of Jim Strickland's office right now. He's probably burning them and shredding them as I speak. A trend analysis exists that higher claims of infractions and claims paid since Jim Strickland's law enforcement philosophy has been enacted and that should be made known so that the efficacy, or lack thereof, of the Strickland crime plan may be known and sunshined to all citizens.
Ms. Boyta?
Young Democrats stand with democratically-minded citizens as they themselves grieve.
I'm gonna need you to conclude your, uh, your comments. If you have any prepared remarks, you can leave them for the council to review.
Yes, sir. We will hold the city of Memphis accountable for any arrest, limit, prohibition, or otherwise of demonstrators against expressing their continued sentiments of grief and demands of justice for Tyree Nichols during this difficult period our city faces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boynton. Next, we have a comment card from Joy Fairfield.
Hi there, um, I'll be brief. Thanks for listening to my words and giving me the opportunity to speak here from my heart today. I'm a professor here at one of our local colleges. I moved here, uh, about seven years ago from California. Like Tyree Nichols, I'm from Northern California. I'm a 49ers fan. I'm a skateboarder and I'm also an artist. Um, I was 10 years old when Rodney King was beaten and that, um, incident was really impressed onto my psyche as a young human. I was so shocked to find that our state and our government could do those kinds of things to the people. It was a rude awakening then.
Excuse me, ma'am.
And it's shocking now at 40.
Uh, can you pause that, Ms. Neipes? Uh, if you can provide your name and address for the record?
Yeah, hi, and my address, Joy Brook Fairfield. I live at 2095 Poplar Avenue, number 54, Memphis, Tennessee.
Thank you, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, so, so I was 10 when that happened and I'm 40 now. I feel too old to be watching the same thing happen over and over. Like, like Tyree, I moved to Memphis trusting that the city would take care of me. I saw some Facebook posts from him recently that I found very moving where he was telling people how excited he was to move here. Um, I think it's, uh, really sad that he was let down by the city in this way, in this existential way. I feel let down by the city about dumb things all the time. He was let down by the city in the most extreme way a person could be let down and that's all of our responsibility. And I just want to know what sort of every single person in this room is gonna do in their own life and in the power that you guys hold and the positions that you have and the seats that you sit in, the halls and rooms that you get to go into, what each of us is gonna do so that the city, um, doesn't let people down like this in the future. I've, I've been working here for seven years. I learned that all of the employees who, uh, killed him, who murdered him, had all been working between 2.5 and five years at their job. I'd just like to say, I've been at my elite college for five years and they still won't let me have a credit card. Um, and these men were able to be judge, jury, and executioner all at one time and take away someone's life and ruin someone's family. And that doesn't seem right to, I got, I got a PhD and they won't let me even have a credit card. Why are you giving life and death power to these people? Um, it just doesn't seem right. Please, um, please listen to all of the things that my colleagues have said up here. The data transparency ordinance needs to be passed. It seems easy. It seems like an easy win. Let's go ahead and do that. Um, let's end pretextual traffic stops. We all know that they're unfair and unjust and racist. Like Amber said, this is an issue of disenfranchisement and it's 2022. We gotta, we gotta get rid of disenfranchisement. We gotta take care of our people. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your remarks. The next card is for Angela Johnson. Is this the same Angela Johnson that spoke earlier? Name and address again for the record, please, Ms. Johnson.
Sure. First name Angela, last name Johnson. Address is 4092 Charter Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. Um, the issue that I'm returning back up to the podium again is, I'm sorry, is not for ethylene oxide this time. There was a community meeting held at Mount Vernon Baptist Church this past Monday um, in regards to the murders that have been taking place in the Westwood Box Town, um, community. A lot of citizens are very concerned. Um, the police did reassure us that it was not a serial killer. However, we did find out that some of the police cameras that are in the area are actually decoy cameras. Um, there was a crime that took place. Unfortunately, I cannot remember the exact date. And the, and I believe the camera was outside of Mount Vernon Baptist Church. And they wanted to turn the footage over, but that was when the pastor of the church discovered that there was no footage because it was a decoy camera. So we are concerned that we are not being taken care of properly and that we deserve actual cameras that are recording footage of crimes in our community. Uh, we want to keep our community safe. We want to be able to go to bed at night and not have to worry about our cars being broken into or someone breaking into our homes and harming us. Or if anything gets caught on camera that can help solve these vicious ongoing investigations. So I'm coming today as a concerned resident, asking is there a resolution or ordinance that can be passed to ensure that there are active cameras in the communities? Because, um, 38109 is a huge area, um, is a high-crime area and there's only one police department serving that area. So anything that city council can do to put in place to ensure that there are active commu, active cameras that are recording these crimes so that the police can solve these ongoing murders in our communities, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Logan, as the chair of the Public Safety Committee, I'm gonna ask that you, that we have a report in the committee about the Memphis Police Department's use of decoy cameras. So thank you for providing those remarks. Before I call our last speaker, um, excuse me, I just want to, and probably allow each council member to, to speak their mind about this, about this matter. There's not a single colleague of mine, I, I can only officially speak for me, but I, there's not a single colleague of mine that does not want justice
Amen.
for Mr. Tyree Nichols. We're asking this community for patience. The last thing that we want is for, on some technicality based upon, uh, premature actions of any individual, appear, anybody, any representative of the city of Memphis that would allow the, these crimes to go unpunished. Uh, we have, you know, one of the things that I disappointantly learned, probably my first year on the council, is just how powerless the council really is. Now, from that standpoint, though, where we are right now, and, you know, if there's anybody that's been a critic of the Strickland administration, it's been me. But from the Strickland administration's position on this, they have turned it over and, and I've made comments just in remarks to individuals about this situation. They have turned this over to the Tennessee Department of Investigation and the District Attorney's Office. The last thing that we would have wanted for this is for a colleague of the Internal Affairs, you know, it could have been somebody in, in Internal Affairs who was in the same rookie class with this individual and somehow has some type of bias or wouldn't necessarily be totally independent in this, in this investigation. But this investigation right now is beyond the council's purview. It's beyond the mayor and, you know, as, if the family is okay with this, if the family is okay with this, Mr. Smiley and I and many others either saw publicly, but Mr. Smiley and I were there in person to hear from the family, to hear from the attorney. We just ask for patience as to not taint and not to allow anything that will allow this investigation, everything along these lines, in order to be untainted. That's all we're asking for. And that's all that I ask of this community. That's all that my colleagues ask. So, so, as, as addressing this, there's nothing that we can do? So, colleague? Sir? 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 Ms. Excuse, excuse, excuse me. Let's have a conversation after this. So is, is there any other? Is there any? Sir, sir, we, we provided you opportunity to talk. Is there? Is there any other? Is there? Ms. Ms. Moses? Is there any other colleague that would like to speak on this side in public? Councilman Warren?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, uh, everyone on the council wants to make sure justice occurs. We want to make sure we don't damage any potential trial that comes forward that would damage justice. So I hope that everyone realizes sometimes to get justice, it takes time, which is why the family is okay with that. Ma'am, I'm, I'm?
Ma'am, 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 you, ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, you did not ask for a comment card.
So I think what we need to see and what we need to do as a community is let's watch and see what happens as the, um, federal justice system investigates this, the Tennessee Bureau investigates this, and then we get a trial that brings justice for Tyree. and then we get a trial that brings justice for Tyree and his family. And that's what we're going for, the justice that comes from a trial that's not damaged by any premature leakage of information that could prejudice a jury or get people off on a technicality. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that I, I do know, as you said, that this is not under our purview. Because we represent the people, we do understand the outcry. We do understand the pain. We do understand what's going on. We, we see and saw what you, what everyone else saw. And as council members, we are human. We understand the concern. But the request that Chairman put forth is to, let's allow the process. Everyone wants justice. Everyone wants healing. Everyone wants answers. And if we allow the process, we can get that due justice and that due process. And I think that's what we're asking for, is to allow the process to come forth so that we can. Otherwise, we still won't see justice, and that's not what anyone wants. We want to know the truth, and we want to begin to heal. We want to begin to fix the problem. As you said, it's now in our city. We've watched it in, you know, with Trayvon. We've watched it in other cities. But now it's upon us, and we dare not allow this situation to be in vain. We definitely want answers. We want healing. This is very hard for all of us. It's very hard, especially mothers, you know, and I'm sure fathers too. But, you know, when you, when you go out and your son goes out, you, you feel some kind of way. We understand that, and we're not discrediting that. We're just asking for the process to take its course so that justice can be done. And, you know, we're all in the same boat. We're all in the same boat in terms of, we, we are affected by what has happened. Don't think because we sit here and do our job, which you allowed, elected us to do, that we don't feel. We do. But please, let's, let's come together as a community, stand together, and allow the process to move forward and be a part of the process, all of us, so that justice can be served.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carlisle.
Thank you. I'll be quick, Chair. We've addressed, due process has to go both ways. I see the sign that, you know, I have to see the footage of the murder. It's out of our hands, and due process has to be due process. It's probably an open and shut case, but I don't know, because I haven't seen the evidence and I'm not an attorney. And so, but to the point, if there are very specific policy recommendations that you would like the council to consider, please put them in writing and send them to the Chair, and we will discuss those things in the public with you here in the debate. It doesn't mean that we're going to agree as a body with everything that's recommended. But in the aftermath, and I think I'm reading between the lines here on, on justice, it's not just the due process and, and holding anybody accountable under the law for a murder charge and, and whatever the sentencing guidelines are, it's the aftermath, right? What policies and procedures can be put into place in order to mitigate this ever happening again? So it's a conversation that we want to have, right? It goes back, somebody mentioned the training standards. I was very concerned when we were told last year that we were changing training standards and acceptance standards for the police academy. We should go back and review that. So again, I'll, I'll wrap up by saying, if there are very specific things that Decarcerate talked about, we talked about suspending licenses, like that's a punitive measure that doesn't have a positive outcome. It, it just, it ends up being, it's a sinking ship, right? And so, anyway, thank you for being here. Thank you for engaging. Please send us policy recommendations. I know that the majority, if not everybody on here, always reads those emails, and we do consider them. So send those to us. Let's have a debate about them. Let's see what we can do. I will say, just to echo Councilman Jones's response, and I know that we're the touch point for you guys as the community, but the way our charter's set up is we are not allowed to demand or dictate what a director does, including the police director. It's an ethical violation for us. It rests solely with the mayor. That being said, we are the appropriating body. And so if it requires, you know, increased money for training, or if it requires increased money for, for counseling, you know, those are things that are within our purview that we can help with. So we want to be a part of the solution. We want to have an engagement with you, the community members. But the best way to do that is to make sure that we're getting dialogue. I understand there's a lot of emotion out there, but our responsibility is to take that emotion and turn it into policy. So we want to have an open debate about specific policy changes that you'd like to see made. So thank you for being here. Really appreciate your comments. They're not falling on deaf ears. We just try to be as calm in demeanor so that you understand that we take each and every one of these very seriously. With that, Mr. Chairman and I yield the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Vice Chair Smiley.
So, well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chair. And as relates to Councilman Carlisle's statement about policy recommendations, there's a group affiliated with a lot of the folks out in the audience. I think they're building, I think in 2020, this body recommended certain policy procedures for the Memphis Police Department to follow. And if I'm not mistaken, those policies were some of the same policies used to terminate the officers. So one, thank you all for sponsoring that particular piece of legislation that we put forth as it relates to Memphis Police Department. But more specifically, as it relates to this, this unfortunate situation, there's an ordinance that will be presented at the next council meeting relating to transparency. I'm just gonna read you preliminary caption until Attorney Wade can thoroughly vet it. An ordinance to amend the city of Memphis Code of Ordinance by amending public safety to create a new article and to establish a requirement for the city of Memphis Law Enforcement Office to collect and regularly report data regarding traffic stops, arrests, use of force, and complaints. And I'll be a sponsor of this particular piece of legislation. And going forward, I would hope to have others sponsors as well, because we have to do more than just talk. And Councilman Jones says all the time, Councilman Carlisle says all the time, the way that this body speak is through opinion. And, you know, the folks are right. We can sit back and offer thoughts and prayers, or we can take action. And I'm on the side of taking action. So at the next council meeting, I will be offering this ordinance to amend and require reporting of traffic stops, require reporting of excessive force, and we gotta hold their feet to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Walter Brody. Mr. Brody. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Robbins.
Mr. Chair, I had recommended over a year ago, new training for the police officers. I'm going to commit to putting it on the table here, and maybe we can get something going there. But they got to have training. It has to be consistent. And council members, we have to stick to our rules too. When we allow, when we say what we're going to do in our meetings and we do something different, then we open ourselves up to other people coming and saying, you allowed them to do it. So let, let's get back to studying what we should do and do the right thing and require our staff to get the right training and implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brody.
Good evening. My name is Walter Brody. Stay at 4256 Le Petticoat. Somebody got to hear this. Jesus Christ love each and every one of you, and everybody's out here. But I'm gonna go into prayer. But first God has said, to focus on me in this time. This time of anguish, anger and hatred and racism and all of this. Jesus said, come to me right now. Focus on me. Don't focus on the police. Don't focus on the city council. He said, focus on me. I will give you peace. I will give you rest in a time of disruption. So let's all of us right now get up and pray. I want you to come and pray with me too, because y'all need prayer. If y'all don't, you know, it's, it's all good, but I'm gonna pray for you anyway. That's right now. We need Jesus right now. Man. Everybody ready? Heavenly Father, I want to thank you right now, Father God. Father God, continue blessing everybody in here. Father God, bless the city council members, all of them. Father God, bless everybody behind the scenes who's working, go up the front. Bless our mayor. Bless everybody who came here, divorced their opinion. Father God, bless the young man. Bless the young man's family, all their friends. Bless the city of Memphis. Bless all our leaders. Father God, bless both our mayors. Bless the policemen. Bless every saint, every sinner. Father God, bless everybody who's going through. Father God, who lost a loved one, who's grieving right now. Father God, I speak Holy Ghost fire on everybody. Father God, to renew their strength, their spirit. Father God, cleanse us all. Father God, give us peace, rest, love, grace, mercy right now. Father God, the city of Memphis, Father God, bless them young men who just left out here, who's angry right now. Father God, get in their spirit right now. Father God, bless their mind. Father God, God stay hurting, and parents, Father God, bless us all, Lord. In the mighty name of Jesus, amen and amen.
I'll let you take the motion. This meeting is adjourned.
Leave that here?
Thanks, sir.
Y'all be good?
See you next time.
Good job, brother.